Alrighty, so we're recording. First off, thank you to everyone who signed up for this program as well as today's speakers. I won't have to introduce them. I'm sure they're more than capable of doing that themselves here in just a moment. My name is Scott Gilbert. I'm the Executive Director with CAI West Florida Chapter. This program was presented us presented to us by Steve, who's on the panel today. And we decided to expand this to a couple of chapters in the state. Predominantly, the ones who I think were most impacted by the recent storms. As this should serve as a great resource and guide to not just dealing with what we just went through in October, but potentially what we will deal with next storm season. So without further ado, I guess we'll start with Steve as sort of the the ringleader of this circus. And then we'll allow our presenters to introduce themselves and we'll go from there. And for those of you who are in the audience, the way this will work is if you have a question, I will be monitoring the Q and A as well as the chat. We will try to answer your questions in real time, so I will be checking those out and trying to present them to our panelists today during the program. We will try to answer all of your questions. And if we don't get the opportunity to, I'm sure our presenters or I can connect you with them at a later time after the conclusion of today's program. So Steve, take it away.
Thank you, Scott, and and welcome everybody to this webinar. As Scott mentioned, my name is Steve Mason. I'm with Altieri Insurance Consultants. I'm the National Director of Business Development there. We are a national public adjusting company. As you can imagine, we've been very hands on in these last month and a half with these insurance claims and these hurricanes. I am a native born Floridian, born and raised in the Miami market. I've gone through the worst in Hurricane Andrew, so I understand what a lot of people are going through. I've also have a history of being a camp manager. I spent 20 years in the association management business here in South Florida in all facets and leadership roles, et cetera, et cetera. I started to get into claims work six years ago because I wanted these insurance dollars to do more for the clients, for the associations. And I found a passion in doing it and I couldn't be happier to welcome the rest of our expert panelists on here to help you and address any questions and concerns because these are unique storms in the sense it's not just wind damage, it's flood damage. And I'm hoping to get a lot of questions out there and to satisfy everybody. So thanks again for joining and I'll pass it on. I'll say, Mike, go, you're next.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Yeah, thanks for having me. Mike Andrews, Brown and Brown Insurance. I've been doing condos now for about 30 years. It's 100% of what I do. I again am a Floridian, born and raised on C S D Key, which was the the eye of the last storm. And I'd say that in the last 45 days, we've seen things that we've never seen, or at least I've never seen in Sarasota in my lifetime. So a lot of changes, a lot of questions from boards. We've had meetings after meetings. I've never been on so many emergency board meetings and and which is great because it's a learning experience for the boards. And I'll be honest, it's a learning experience for me, too. I've learned a lot over the last 45 days from helped, you know, the adjusters, the public adjusters and and also the carriers. So the whole idea here is we want to do the best job we can for our clients to get the best bang for your buck through these policies. And you know, today, hopefully, we can answer some questions or I can help out with the insurance side of things. What I'm seeing, obviously, everyone's concerned about budgeting. Again, they were concerned about budgeting, you know, a few weeks prior to the storm, but we're revisiting that. So I'll be happy to address those questions as well.
I'll pop in next. Good afternoon, Kelly Corcoran with Ball Janic. I had our insurance recovery team here. We're a law firm. We have offices in Sarasota, Tampa, Orlando, Fort Lauderdale and Miami. I specialize in handling first party insurance claims. So as Mike and Steve and Mark have mentioned, or Will may have mentioned at least that hope I can answer any questions that come up, especially the interplay with the wind and flood, you know, that we're seeing.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Mark Cove. I'm with On Point or First Resource Bank, one and the same. I've been in the banking business and the and doing HOA work probably for my entire career, about 36 years now. So I've been in it for a long time. Split practice, we have, I have a dual residency. I spent about half my year in the in the beautiful state of Minnesota, then the other half of the year in the beautiful sunny state of Florida. So I've worked for years on on storms, whether it's been hurricanes in the in the in the south or tornadoes, which are a whole different thing up north here where, you know, they get three minutes of notice. So there's no, there's no planning for that damage and that recovery and how banks can play a role. So I've been a commercial business banker my whole career. So I do everything from fund the build of townhomes and condo buildings, anything to manufacturers and all things HOA have been doing that for quite some time. And so I personally have been experienced or I've been impacted by this last storm. Milton did throw six inches of water in my house in Ponte Gorda. And so I'm going through the same thing that a lot of these HOAs are now is figuring navigating those insurance policies. And thankfully, I've had a little bit of experience doing that for clients, so make it a little easier. But glad to answer questions about, you know, how banks can play a role when it comes to waiting for claims and other things with respect to how to navigate that financially. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I'm going to pass it over to you.
Sure, we don't have any questions just yet, but I think we had a couple of talking points that we as a group discussed via email the other day, and that should maybe generate some questions from our audience. I don't know the point of origin where you all would like to start, but maybe what's most relevant is what's what's occurred in the past as far as the outcome from the recent storms? And then we can talk about future preparation for 2025 and beyond.
Sure, I mean, I'm happy to get the discussion started and let's talk about what we just went through. You know, we had two major storms that, you know, hit our affected our west coast dramatically. And, you know, as Mike says, as he's learning a lot during this process, so am I. As a company, it's we're very fortunate to have veterans helping clients adjust these claims, but the the biggest difference with these storms is these flood claims dealing with FEMA. And how do we deal and how do we separate what's flood responsibility? And then you have Milton coming in, what's wind responsibility? And oh yeah, there may be another storm coming through next week, so we got to keep an eye on those things. So let's prepare as best we can. I'm hoping it doesn't affect the west coast, hoping it doesn't affect Florida. We've taken a brunt of of damage here in the last couple of weeks here. But the focus point that I wanted to focus is on flood claims. So if anybody has any questions, I see what's insured and what's not insured. And I'll just give one or two examples of things that, you know, association managers may not know. And I can tell you in 20 years of management, I didn't know these things, you know, like emergency power. If you're renting generators out there, you know, those things are not covered under your flood policy, you know, that type of thing. There's 17 specific items that NFIP will cover that's listed on your basic condominium flood policy. And those 17 specific items are, there's no wiggle room there and everybody should be somewhat familiar with them. I'm happy to send out a list. Anybody that want to request that, so you have an understanding of it. But these are specific items, not just in the common areas, but for those first floor units and what flood effects in those first floor units. Mike, I don't, you want to jump in here at any time as far as the flood policies and FEMA's feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I'd maybe say, I mean, I'm going to go off some hot topics what I'm hearing because I've been in and out of these meetings left and right. Expectations, I think, setting expectations on the way the process works. A lot of people, this is their first go around. And so everyone's antsy. They think everything just happens overnight, which it doesn't. So I mean, you go through three different stages. You have to stabilize the building. Then you have to bring it back to the white box and then you have to rebuild. A lot of people are still in that stabilization stage for whatever reason, you know, they started stabilizing, then they got hit with another storm. Some people have run into asbestos, which is a whole different area and you can talk to that. But people are getting really frustrated that they're not rebuilt. They're wanting to do stuff on their own. They want to kamikaze it and just go off and just hire people, which I get it. I mean, everybody wants to be up and running, but the reality is that most of the damaged items, whether it be flood or wind, are the responsibility of the association. So the association has to maintain the integrity, make sure it's done right. But most importantly, make sure it's done right with your contractor or your public adjuster to where you're going to get paid. People don't understand if you do not go within these guidelines of the NFIP, they will deny it. I had one come back to me already where the adjuster is like, nope, this is way out of whack. It's not in the format we need. And it was a $900,000 bill. So I think that we need to be patient. I think we need to make sure we lean on our contractors and our professionals. Because up until this point, I never really realized the benefits of having a public adjuster. I'll be honest with you and I talked to Steve about this. But when you get into, you know, three different storms, you know, we had Debbie, we had Helene, we now we had Milton and possibly this one. I mean, you've got a couple of different adjusters, you've got different deductibles. People are saying, hey, what about the flood? I just just dried out from Helene. Is this another deductible through Milton? And we can talk to that. So I think manage expectations and patience is a huge deal with these associations. And maybe one of you can talk to, you know, some of the issues I'm seeing is the restoration companies, you know, maybe billing for things that aren't covered. Steve, you mentioned a good one, the power. I've been listening to some people say that those generators are covered if they are powering equipment like the dehumidifiers and so forth. But I found out differently. That is not the case. So these are all lessons learned and unfortunately, they're at the expense of the association if these contractors aren't doing things correctly.
And there's a lot of details that again, we're here today with you to be a resource for you. And there's a lot of details you're not expected to know, but to have to call the right resource, like when you need to file proof of loss for NFIP. Now I need proof of loss. But as Mike said, we have contractors going out and I can't emphasize enough, use your local vendors, lose your local relationships, your local contractors. Watch out for those that are coming in from out of town, out of state. But you know, there's contractors that are ready just to cut things up and demo. You want to make sure and your your boards need to understand what they're doing. Is it covered? And that's so so important to have representation with a public adjusting company so we can identify what's covered and what's not covered and make sure those contractors are that you're going to get paid for. Or manage to set that expectation from the start and be like, hey, they want to do this. If you're okay, just understand this is not covered. So it's so important to have that resource. I don't know, Kelly, if you want to jump in.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to finish off by saying another big concern you're saying the resource and getting things is is financially having the money. You know, now all of a sudden you got everyone with their hand out. All the contractors have been working for basically free or a small percentage. Everyone's like, all right, where's my money? You know, did we get that draw yet? And you know, that's where Mark and Kelly can talk about.
Yeah, and I'll let that segue right to Mark just adding in, piggybacking what Steve said about the emergency powers condo boards have. And it's very important and I'll let Mark, you go ahead and talk about lines of credit because that can fall within an emergency power.
Yep. So I mean, it's it's a, I love what Mike and Steve and Kelly, I mean, you hear the word prepared. I know it's hard to be prepared when we're talking post storms, but I like Scott's introduction to as we as we look into hop into 25 or even right now, prepare for this possible Sarah that might be coming through. But you know, the the nature of the beast, when you when you need money, the time to to build a relationship with your banker or your financing source is not when you need the money. It's ideally ahead of it. It's building that financial network, building that trusted network of advisors, right? A good attorney, a good insurance, multiple insurance folks and 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 good accountants, good people have a good package, good stuff ready. And I and I've had calls this last couple of weeks already. And I'll kind of outline how the different sides go. I've had calls from people I've known for a long time. I know their association. I know the makeup. I know their reserve. I understand if they've had reserve studies done. I know I know what they're, you know, I've got a really good idea just when they make the phone call of already what that association is, where it's at, what their financial health is. So I don't have to reinvent any wheel. Then I've had some other calls from, hey, a good buddy told me I need to give you a call. We have a deposit account relationship. We've never met our banker. It's a 1-800 number and now we have this need of possibly needing to pre-fund an insurance payment, pre-fund work to these contractors. It's going to be months before the policies pay out and conclude. Well, we have to start from scratch. And so, you know, the lesson learned there is, you know, two to three times a year, you should be meeting with your banker. But if you have that letter situation right now in front of you, the best thing to do is have a nice, clean, concise financial package so the bank can act quickly. You know, banks, by notorious, if they're looking to give a one or $2 million line to pre-fund some repairs to the association, you know, that's not something that gets done typically in three days. So, you know, the cleaner, the better the package, you know, the show that you work with guys like Steve and have have good companies like Brown and Brown behind that and have a good attorney, that 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 means everything to us that we can fast track those plans. And when I say we, I mean, the banking industry, this is, I'm not giving you something that's a secret sauce, but building a good relationship with the banker to make sure they understand the health of your association matters a ton in this stuff. And banks aren't willing to let money out. I mean, we understand that the insurance companies are going to pay. We understand that they're busy, they're backlog. I'm experiencing it in my property in Ponte Gorda now. There, I mean, it's, you know, it's going to be weeks before my claim's ready, but I'm still setting up with the drywall crew at their approval to come out and I'm going to pay them out of pocket or use a credit facility myself. So that's kind of the nature of the beast there. It's it's preparedness. It's it's crisp, concise data that's going to get you to finish line. And I think I'm guessing that's true of everybody I'm sharing this panel with.
And me, I'm going to segue about your backlog comment because a lot of questions and a lot of things I'm hearing is my insurance adjuster came out initially and disappeared for the next three to four weeks. And I want to make sure everybody understands with this process when these disasters hit and let alone to back to back. Insurance adjusters are third party adjusters. They get 200 to 300 claims assigned to these to these logs. And they're and they have a certain amount of days they got to respond by. So they're requesting inspections and they actually welcome if the association hired a public adjuster because we do a lot of the work for them. But I'm I was at Longboat Key last week with a client and we talked, we just talked to the insurance adjuster who's been working these last month and a half on these claims. And he told me he has not written one report yet because he has not had time to get to. And that is the backlog they have on insurance adjustment side. And that's why, you know, again, being here is source for you to help expedite things as much as possible using a public adjuster is advantageous, especially during disaster situations because yeah, reputation expedite advance payments out and process, you know, those clients that have PAs that they get moved to the top of the pile than those that don't, unfortunately. We have a lot of our adjusting team that used to be insurance adjusters in another life and they've been working on the PA side for a lot. But yeah, expect those type of delays, especially if you don't have a public adjuster engaged. But that's what we're, that's typical of disasters. Unfortunately, and again, preparing prepping for next week. Let's hope this storm goes south of us and under the state, but make sure you have all of our contact information.
We do have a quick question and it's a common one, whether you're on Nextdoor or Facebook, you've probably seen this, but questions about landscape cleanup and debris. What is technically covered by an HOA insurance or what would be expected to be covered?
Mike, you want to take that one?
Well, I can address that. Unfortunately, landscaping is something that they don't cover. It doesn't matter what carrier you have. And I know a lot of people had debris cleanup, had sand. I mean, talk about Longboat Key. I mean, some of my clients had four feet of sand in their parking lot and you're talking upwards of close to $100,000 to get it out of there. It's not within the perimeter of a building that's covered. NFIP is not going to touch it or remove any debris. It's inside, like I had a couple that had three or four feet inside units and inside the clubhouse, they'll take that out. So unfortunately, and even if you wound back the hands of time and said, hey, Mike, let's go back before the storm. Let's purchase some landscaping coverage. I couldn't get it. Even if you wound back the hands of time and said, hey, Mike, our pool's three feet under sand from flooding. I need coverage for that. You can't get it. So there's certain things you can and cannot insure unfortunately in Florida. But the only positive is is we are all in the same boat. When you're dealing with flood insurance, we all deal with the NFIP, federal government, the federal program. I don't care if it says Hartford, Wright Flood, State Farm, whoever on the name of it, they just service it. Those are servicing providers. It is all underwritten and everything is handled by the National Flood Insurance Program. So everybody is in the same boat, dealing with the same policy that Steve was talking about. And it's pretty black and white. They do not step outside that. Now, I have heard and just, I mean, I've had really good feedback from a lot of my clients that the adjusters are trying to do the right thing, they're being friendly. But like Steve says, you know, a lot of them, if you haven't met them yet, a lot of them for from Alabama, Kentucky, wherever, they come down here, they do all their onsite and then they go back and they write up their reports. So it is a process. So you're wanting to try and get that advance. And I think from what Steve I've heard in the past is you want to get as much of the advance as you can upfront because it could be a while. And then you're out looking for Mark, hey, Mark, I need money. And I was ignorant to the fact, but I was in a seminar about a week ago, week and a half ago. And somebody was saying that it could be, you know, two weeks or so, three weeks even more, even if you're an established client, but if you haven't gone to them with a line of credit. So if you don't have cash, these guys are going to move on and stop work. So it's it's a learning experience for sure.
I'll just add add on to what Mike said about the flood. So FEMA issued the title of it, a memo, but it's the Hurricane Milton Claims Payment Process and it's an interesting read. It's a short document, but what it did, it actually allows adjusters, the flood adjusters to go outside of the typical parameters. So they're able to issue payment without a signed proof of loss, without a signed, you know, adjuster's report, which is which is atypical. But again, they're trying to speed up the process to get funds. And this is really the one, the section, there's two parts, this first section here that really I think applies, given the 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 two storms we just had. They're one, they got to treat each storm as a separate loss. That's a given. But the other part is, is that they're pushing the insurers to assign the original adjuster from the first claim to adjust the second claim, which is important. The idea is because you don't want to duplicate, you know, duplication of the claim. You want the person that had the eyes on it the first time to put the eyes on it the second time to see and to distinguish whether or not there's new damage or it's still in the state of it was right after the storm and there's nothing new. And if they don't have that adjuster, they got to use the same adjusting firm if they don't have the same. So it goes through it, but that it's it's good on the one hand because you should then get a better, I think, more of a fair shake, but that also could delay it because now what if that adjuster has moved on somewhere else? They want that adjuster to come back and it's going to be several weeks. And then the other thing I just, the two other things to point out, the deadline for the proof of loss was extended to 120 days from 60, typically 60 under the policy. But there was a buried in it is a section on required communication. So this is for the insurers and their adjusters as far as required communication as providing prompt support. But what they added in there is that the failure to timely respond and address policyholder questions may provide the basis for a reduction in the allocated lost adjustment expenses on a claim. So what happens is is the everything tied to the adjuster's expenses for going out, the time creating the report, that's submitted for payment because these are mostly third party adjusting companies. What the National Flood Insurance Program had said is if you fail to properly communicate and respond, that's going to affect our reimbursement of your expenses. And I think that's at least provides some ammunition as a policyholder to say, hey, you're not properly communicating. You're not being here when you're supposed to be here and adjust this claim. And we're going to document it because it's our understanding that it's going to hurt your reimbursement of expenses. Sometimes those little bit of tidbits, those things that you communicate in writing moves you to the top. Like Steve was saying, you have an unrepresented claimant and you have a represented claimant. You get very, you get treated very differently. So it's important to not only be represented, whether it's by public adjusters like Altieri or a law firm like ours, but then also to make sure they're fully aware of these types of memos because these are the things that separate, I think, claims being adjusted quickly and payments.
You know, when it comes to the payment side, and I like how Mike said, it's one of those things that even as an existing customer, three weeks, you know, because the banks typically are making decisions on two fold items. If you have, if you, if you're one of the real lucky ones and have that insurance claim kind of really buttoned up and it's pretty clear what's going to be covered, you know, the 14 points on NFIP, et cetera, you see that you meet them all. But remember, the banks got to make a legal, you know, kind of a assumption of how much that's going to be real. By and large, the banks are going to be out there saying, what's the health of your association? How are your reserves? How's your, how's your delinquency rate amongst your ownership? What's, what's the health of your own personal cash flow? That's the decision. So the better you can show that picture, the better the bank understands that, the quicker they are able to respond. Because it's like for one of the calls I've had in the last couple of weeks, it doesn't even bother me what the insurance ends up covering because that's a healthy enough association where I know they can afford a payment to me of X based upon just their regular, regular dues and their regular expense structures. So if I don't have to dig deep into finding that, and as we all know, some associations don't have necessarily the best management, which is the case for probably a lot of our large audience that are are good managers. A good manager, a good attorney, a good accountant, having, having some of the people you see at the top of this thread in your world makes a difference for those of us in the finance piece to say, this association is well represented. They are put in a good position and let's find a way to give money in five to 10 days. It's not so easy because a lot of people just don't have that ready. But that's the lesson for, I think, you know, as we roll into 25 of how people can get better prepared. That's not even a word, but better prepared for events like this going forward. And hopefully, we don't have three hurricanes in the season. That just, that just, you know, there's nothing, we're all learning. And I think Steve said that at the start, I've, I've learned, I've been doing this 36 years. I've learned a ton in the last handful of weeks that just, it's just because it's just unprecedented. So.
And those are those advanced payments should be around 20% on average of what your limits are. And those of you that don't know your limits for the building are $250,000 limit. Excuse me. If you have first floor units, there's, you know, there's a limit per unit and they were affected by the first floor elevation. And elevation is everything. I mean, we've seen claims denied just because there was a step down into a house of eight inches. Well, now you're below elevation, you know, just simple things like that. Like I said, it's very specific. You should at least get those advanced payments out, you know, 10% is is what they're doing now, but you know, that range. Seeing a lot of our clients get those type of advanced payments out, but it's so key to document everything because in the case, and I'm going to segue this to Kelly for a minute, worst case scenario, we got to go to litigation and we got to fight. Having to file T's cross and I dotted expedites and produces the most favorable results. If we have to pass a file over to Kelly's firm and be like, okay, we have to go to litigation. And I'm not talking generally, I'm not talking just for flood. Let's say we have wind claims and any type of claim and we and insurers, insurance company doesn't want to pay. And then we at the ball, having that file of every conversation, every email sent, everything, again, so important to have proper representation because you as managers or board members out not expected or not, you don't know what the deadlines are. You know, your, your biggest benefit is knowing people like us, your resources to help you through this process. And then we have to go to Kelly and then unfortunately, if we get into that litigation phase, then he does his thing to try to settle the claim.
It always helps to have a file properly documented. It allows us to create a narrative outside the actual damage itself. So anytime we can, we can show that there was a delay in responding, you know, so when we're in the litigation or we're writing demand letters, it's not simply just this was damaged, this is covered, here's why. It's also, you know, several pages of their of their failed claim handling. Because look, the idea is the insurance companies, what they do is they manage risk. So the best way to get an insurance company to pay sooner or even more is to create risk. And the best way to create risk is, as Steve was saying, is just document, 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 document.
Hey, question, I've got a question for maybe Kelly and Steve even on, how important are photos? At a time, I had a couple of associations that have talked to me about, they were scrambling to get just documentation for hurricane.
Yeah, I'll just jump in first.
I would say, I
Go ahead, Steve.
Now, I would say I do seminars all over the floor, all over Florida, and I always say a photo says a thousand words, but video says a million words. I had someone videotape during a storm from during Irma and just videotape water coming in through the windows. Didn't evacuate, one of those owners that don't like to evacuate. But he videotaped everything. So video and photos are so instrumental. You have to show the current condition, set a benchmark before the storm of the current condition. And if you, you know, we have our milestone inspections that were required to do, that may not say the whole picture because I've seen some suspect reports. But documentation is so key and so important in this era where we have multiple storms, right? It's so important to document the damages from each storm, you know, we have one coming possibly next week. Is property been documented properly today as to the damages caused by the previous storms? And if not, let me know. We'll make sure and help you to get out there to document the current damages today so we can separate any new damages you may sustain if this storm comes through next week. It affects your claim tremendously. And this is why you have to have the right resources. I know I sound like a broken record here, but it's so important because I've seen so many people get short. Because I've seen so many people, uh, get shortchanged out there and it's just, it's just because they didn't know who to call.
Yeah, I, I would say in our experience, the two most common, uh, exclusions relied upon. It's the pre-existing damage exclusion, which is added by endorsement, and there's a couple of various forms of it. And the second, uh, that I think is kind of creeping up is, uh, construction defects. Uh, just more associated with roof tiles or shingles. And so there's nothing better, you know, when we're getting handed a, a file worked up by Altieri. But then at the same time, the association has all these pictures. Because, you know, in June or May, they followed, you know, our recommendations from a, from a past seminar. And they took pictures of the entire property. So we can walk them through saying, no, see here is a downspout and now there's not a downspout. You know, or here this roof looked good, this low roof looked great and now it doesn't. So it really is helpful. And I don't know if Mike, if you're seeing where, uh, insurers, are they're getting a little bit more strict on the condition of buildings? You know, doing the, doing more and more inspections. Uh, you know, exercising their right under these commercial policies to do inspections beforehand, sending in requests. Uh, you know, for things to be fixed prior to issuance. I don't know what you're seeing, Mike.
Yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, think about it, if you've got your money and you're investing in an insurance company. You can basically cherry pick and, and they want the best and your envelope, your building has to be sealed up properly, like you said. Construction defects, wear and tear, that gives them an out not to pay. So you need to maintain your property, make sure everything's taken care of. Um, so now I, I, I wanted to, uh, bring something up and, and this is probably the most common thing. And, and this could go on a little bit, but, um, you know, I'm getting, uh, questions from a lot of my clients about. Um, what's it going to look like moving forward? You know, what, you know, they're getting killed financially right now. Uh, we had budgets in there, um, you know, a month ago, maybe a little bit before the storms. And now, you know, my, my, my famous email is, I know you're slammed busy, but what about the budget, uh, now? So I want to tell everybody that, um, the market, from our perspective, the insurance program's perspective. Uh, was getting better. And I say the market, just not just for condos, for any property in Florida. I own a home east of seventy-five and the prior year I took a hundred and twenty-two percent increase. We all got kicked twenty-two, twenty-three. Things were starting to lighten up in twenty-four. I'm starting to deliver some good news and then all of a sudden here comes the storms. Um, so far from what I've been seeing in a general aspect and things are going to change. So far what I'm seeing is the renewals that I've had after the fact are still pretty decent. But I want to remind everybody that these carriers, everyone that writes, excluding citizens and so forth. But most of these carriers, they meet with their team, their reinsurance programs typically once a year, and that's in January, sometimes twice in June. And they talk about how the year went. Now, we all know the year's not going so well and it's not over yet. So, you know, moving into twenty twenty-five and beyond. I think we're going to see some increases again, unfortunately. Um, as to where we are probably going to see some decreases. I don't think they're going to be horrible from what I've been hearing. But, you know, I'm telling a lot of my clients to budget in, you know, fifteen percent depending on where they are. Um, and then hopefully we'll, we'll do a little better than that. I mean, a lot of people that have citizens, people are wondering how, how are these storms other going to affect us, you know, if I have citizens? Or if I have the NFIP flood, what's that going to do? Am I going to get killed or am I going to get canceled? Good thing about if you have citizens, the state or FEMA, the federal program. Citizens, uh, normally can take about a fourteen percent increase is what they're filed for the next year. And FEMA is filed for an eighteen percent increase. But they've been filed for an eighteen percent for the last few years and I've been seeing, uh, an average of ten to twelve percent. So you're not going to get canceled by FEMA. And believe it or not, in flood, the flood claims don't affect your premiums. Um, now, will the wind claims affect your premiums? Yeah, it could. It doesn't affect it if you're with citizens. Citizens doesn't take that into play. If I have somebody with ten claims and I have a building down the street with zero claims and they're the same information, they're going to get the same rate. But at some point you're going to be outside citizens, the state pool. So, um, it is going to cycle back, I think, the other way a little bit, hopefully not too bad. Because again, I pay insurance as well, but, um, it's, it's kind of an open-ended number right at this point.
Michael, I have a question for you. Um, and if there's any light at the end of this disastrous, uh, last couple of weeks. Most of the wind claims we're seeing are not meeting the high windstorm deductibles. So we're not seeing a lot of wind claims being filed. And a lot of people are like, oh no, insurance is going to skyrocket again. And you just made a comment over there. Well, a, a lot of these claims are NFIP claims or flood. Um, we know the government doesn't run out of money. So no one is worried about the NFIP, you know, um, going insolvent or anything of that nature. But because of, and I don't, I don't know how many wind claims are you're seeing being filed that are meeting these high deductibles. Because everybody knows, I, I, you know, back in the day, I used to say, oh yeah, we used to get two to five percent deductibles. Now there's seven and ten percent deductibles. Um, and it's just, it's, it's getting higher and hires. Um, so I, I don't know how many wind claims have you've actually seen that are meeting the actual deductibles as far as your office and your clients.
Yeah, so I'd say probably, you know, I, of the ones that started off and, and we, we go into a, a green. I, I leveled everything green, no claim, yellow, we're assessing and red, hey, we're filing a claim, you know, we got damage. Um, a lot of them stayed yellow for a while because they were kind of in that gray area. But remember too, it's not, it's the, the deductible is per structure, per covered item. So a lot of people have maybe their clubhouse, it could be covered five percent of maybe a million bucks or whatever. So it's, you know, it's five or three is typically what I'm seeing. Uh, it was ten, seven and a half, but the market settled a little bit. So I probably have, I'd say, you know, maybe two dozen wind claims open right now. That are going to claim on it, um, from associations. Some of them are going to be, I mean, I've got a couple that are going to be probably well over the five million dollar mark, um, for wind. So also had a fire, um, that popped up during the hurricane. So, you know, it sparks, so there, there you got one with fire policy. You got a wind policy loss and you possibly two flood claims, all in one association.
And again, uh, different deductibles.
Yep, yep. So the kicker.
Loss or, or concordia, there's still that play here.
The, the good thing is, is the kicker is you'd rather have a flood loss. One, because again, it doesn't go in your claim history and two, typically the flood deductible is a lot less than the wind. Um, you know, the highest flood deductible you can get is twenty-five thousand dollar per building. Most people have less. Um, some people, you know, trying to save some money and go with the twenty-five, which is fine. So the reality is you, you welcome a flood claim because also it covers more. You know, it, it goes without saying that we're used to the white box coverage. Because we're talking typically about wind losses and fire losses here in Sarasota, Manatee area. Uh, even down south, but flood covers a lot more. It covers in, covers some flooring, cabinets, fixtures and so forth. So, um, if you want to have a loss, you want it to be a flood loss.
Yeah, and, and again, there's a list of all those things. Heard as far as appliances that are covered, appliances that aren't covered. The rhyme or reason why they select certain things and don't select things is beyond my education standard. But you know, they'll cover a microwave, an oven, dishwasher, but not a washer, no laundry equipment. So it's, it, there's a whole list and it's black and white on the NFIP policies. If you look at the general property, uh, the FEMA F one twenty-three policy, the whole list is there and we're happy to supply to those that. Requests what's exactly covered and what's not covered.
I've got a question for you all, um, and you've touched on it a little bit, but maybe this is slightly more specific. Uh, can you all touch on some primary differences between, I guess it would be categorized, categorized as association. Versus unit owner responsibility, uh, as they apply to, let's say, just seven eighteen specifically on hazard policy?
So you're talking the wind policy and condominiums?
Yeah, I, sure. You, you know better than I do.
Um, all right, Mike. If you want to take that, I'm happy to take it if you want.
That's fine. Uh, you're cutting out on me a little bit, Steve. I don't know if that, anyone else has that. Um, but yeah, so it's.
Well, go ahead and take the question.
Sorry, it's, it's cutting out on me a little bit, but, um, yeah, so wind is a little bit different, Scott. Wind is the white box. Um, basically you ever walk into a place that's newly constructed? And the exterior walls and windows are all there. You walk in, there's drywall up everywhere. Every single wall has drywall up, but you're standing on concrete and there's no cabinets, there's no fixtures. I call that the white box. There's a wind loss. The association per the seven eighteen statutes is responsible for that white box. And then the unit owner has a policy called an HO six that takes care of the interior, which is the paint, flooring, cabinets, fixtures and so forth. Where it gets a little confusing right now, uh, and you flip over to the flood. The flood covers a lot more as to where it covers the white box, but it also covers flooring. It covers cabinets that are touched by water, usually typically the lower cabinets. It covers appliances, uh, as Steve mentioned, certain appliances. So it covers a lot more than what we're used to doing. Um, now there's different levels to that and they all use the same, uh, software to figure that out. Um, but people are typically pleasantly surprised on a flood loss of what they get. Um, and from what I've heard and Steve and, and Kelly can maybe talk to this. Um, is from what I've seen and what I've heard is typically, let's just say you have, you know, a certain type of cabinets or so forth. Or a certain type of appliance, if it's level two, you know, it's a Samsung, never get, well, never mind. So let's just say it's a Samsung, you know, level two. If they don't make that anymore and there's a level one and three, they're going to give you the level three. It's kind of light kind and quality puts you back, uh, in a spot where you were. Uh, no worse is what they're trying to do. Now, the separation on flood is the unit owner is responsible for all the contents. You take the roof off and you shake it, everything that comes out, that would be the unit owner's responsibility for flood.
Yeah, I, I'll.
Owners that didn't know they didn't have any contents. So, and again, just read your flood policy. They're like, oh, I thought I had contents coverage. I'm like, it says it right there. We have ten thousand, twenty-five thousand. You got, you gotta, gotta read, read that deck page at least.
Yeah, and Mike, like you said though, with the flood, it is a pleasant surprise. We have one where the first floor, um, you know, meeting with the board and explaining to them exactly. What, what's covered and the flood insurer in that one was quick, already have it, you know, they, what they note it's. You know, they note the actual model numbers for all the appliances in the cabinets. They do rate it on high grade, medium, low as far as the cabinetry and the things as far as finishes. Um, but the, uh, the board in general was pleasantly surprised, even though they knew it was covered. But actually seeing it and agreed to as coverage, that was, uh, it was good for them.
And Kelly, and how many times are we arguing, well, only the bottom cabinets are covered, not the top one. So then, then you got an issue of matching, you know, and then it's, it's all, again, it's setting the expectation from the start and make sure the policy holders are aware.
Look, not even that, and the other, the next issue kind of going after. With the putback, you know, what Mike always, you know, what Mike's been saying is the perfect way to put it, you got the white box. Because that's how contractors look at it. So they'll do like a two-phase or two different contracts. One is, is they'll have the white box contract to get it in, but with the board now having the flood funds. For purposes of the interiors of those first floor units. Now you run into the issue of the unit owners selecting finishes and dealing with the funds that were paid to put it back. Versus now what they want to put back. And so it, it can create some strife potentially, uh, when you run to that scenario. Because this, in this particular instance, the same contractor is going to do, you know, the finishes and putback for the first floor units.
One of, one of the things I want to get back to, which alluded to Scott's question about seven eighteen and, and wind coverage. Um, let's talk about. For a second, because I, when I do seminars, people are surprised to learn that windows and sliding glass doors are covered by a condominium's association policy. Um, and I showed in the Florida statute that talks about, and you know, the three main items of protection are concrete, windows, sliding doors and roof. Um, and the, you know. Typically the governing documents are put in the owners responsible for the maintenance of these sliding glass stores and windows. But under an insurable event, which is how it's stated in the Florida statute, um, that they are covered, uh, from a direct wind result. Um, you know, like a hurricane. So that's something that a lot of people, uh, uh, don't fully understand. But your whole windows and sliding glass doors are covered by the association's policy and the condominium during any type of insurable event. So I just want to make that clear too, because I get a lot of confusion from that.
One thing I'd like to add from the banking perspective is, and I, I think you've heard it said by all three. Um, you know, the guys that are going to do the best work probably aren't going to be the most available at the moment, contractors wise. And definitely don't look to find these out of state, by by night in the back of their vans pulling up. Uh, because I think you'll end up getting, uh, you know, not only a bad deal, I've just seen so many of them create problems and issues. And I think the good contractors understand the white box and they understand what's covered and what's not. And they can really help you understand the quality of replacements and help your, help your owners understand the quality of replacements and what they can choose from. So you don't end up with this, this rabbit's hole you end up going down with, with owners or with, with part of your association when it comes to. Replacing those upper cabinets and how does that get contracted in and matching? And, uh, the good contractors here, uh, will understand that, but it's really important to find a good partner on that side, just the same.
So Mark, in that scenario, uh, does the bank vet the contractor at all? Knowing that the money's going, you know, the money's basically being used to the contractor. So is there a vetting process?
Hundred percent, uh, you know, I, I shouldn't say a hundred percent. For me, it's a hundred percent. It's not a hundred percent in the industry. But I will tell you, we do, uh, only because I, you know, it's, you know, at the end of the day, you know. We still have the, the parties that are, that are owing the obligation and they ultimately are responsible for making those selections. Uh, but we will have no hesitation, uh, pulling up some records. And, and actually, we've even done, uh, you know, I hate to say it, but private eye searches on owners of some of these companies. Uh, you know, it costs us about four or five hundred bucks and we'll find if, uh, if this, if Bob Smith, you know, contractor Bob Smith. Uh, operated under ten different names, uh, and went bankrupt nine times before and left people holding bags. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that those associations and management companies understand that. But the good thing today, you know, I mean, we've seen this, we see this in CAI, we see this in general life. The good management company, I mean, this is also a, a plug for having a really good management company. You know, every so often, associations try to, you know, you see those boards that are really frugal. Uh, and really don't want to spend the money on managers or management. Good management companies are going to solve this problem for you too, because they're going to provide, uh, they're going to provide trusted, uh. People that they've known, that they understand, that they hopefully maybe even met through CAI, right? And they've had a chance to, to build long-term relationships with, and, and, and that makes a huge difference. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of ways and, and yeah, I would expect the bank and hopefully all the trusted advisors of these associations to. Provide input and I'm guessing Mike and Steve, uh, you know, Mike, my guess is you're asked all the time, who should I use? You know, what, you know, you know, because I'm going to guess, uh, even the insurance guys see the, see the contractors that are trying, uh, you know, to, to. Jerk the system and that's only going to delay payment of claims over time.
Yeah, Mark, you bring up a good point and, and actually I'm just making a note of it even before you mentioned it. You know, you get in these relationships and you get these guys that obviously they hire in people and they subcontract out the work. Probably some of the biggest complaints that I've had is, Mike, who's working on my property here? I've got guys in here, you know, and they're, they're not who I hired and they're not getting the work done. So I guess from a question for Steve is, how do you manage that as a public adjuster? You know, because your job is to manage, you know, the funds and keep things in line and keep everything going. When these guys, you know, these, these associations have relationships with a local company. And then they bring in these subs, which is fine, and they have to, to handle it, but these subs aren't doing what they need to be doing. Um, I mean, how often you run across having to fire these guys and get somebody else in there? Uh, right now, that is my biggest problem with all my clients is, are they getting the right work done? Um, and are these contractors treating them fairly and, and working like they should be?
So we don't, um. Married to any company, uh, if the association has a relationship with a contractor and that's who they want to use. We need to make sure that however their building is built properly, so we can put it in, in our estimate report and convert it to what's called EXACTIMATE, which is. The report the insurance company uses. We need to make sure all the work that they're doing and we, and we get this from the start is covered properly by, by the insurance company. Um, we don't, we're not hammers, we don't swing hammers. It's our job to recover the funds necessary to make the proper repairs. The money's not escrow, the money's paid directly to the association. Um, we ask the association to vet the contractors. Again, if, if they come to us, this is a contractor we love, we have a relationship with, no problem, we'll work with them. Um, if they ask us, we don't know any contractors, can you recommend some? Sure. Um, but if, if, if you've already signed contracts and you brought us in, we want to make sure we want to see every signed contract. So we understand what scope that they signed. Um, again, our goal is to make sure that they're doing work, that their scope of work is properly covered under the insurance policy. And they're not doing anything, um, you know, let's take demolition of drywall. Oh, they like to come in and cut all the drywall out. Well, no, you only covered a certain amount of feet above the floodline, X, Y, Z. And we make sure this is all what you do. But ultimately it's the association's responsibility, they need to be happy with their contract and be satisfied with that. Um, so that's a conversation we have in, in, in the, in the beginning. Um so that's a conversation we have in, in, in the, in the beginning. Um you know, there, there, we've had clients that just didn't know what to do and they just hired the first contractor that showed up. And we're like, wait, you, you signed a timing materials contract. We need to make sure they're doing things, you know, and look, I'm not sitting here, I don't want a bad mouth contractor. A lot of great contractors out there, but like I said, there's a lot of out of state contractors and there's contractors that will try to. Read an insurance policy and tell you what's covered, which is illegal. Um you know, so again, to have your resources, this is. We are here for, call Mike, call myself, call anybody, just to make sure what a contract is telling you is accurate. Um or get us involved from the start, so we can make sure what they're doing is properly covered by, by the policy.
Uh one thing I'll add with regards to contractors is it really depends on the scope of the work. You know, if you're going to be touching MEP, anything structural windows, you're going to have to go through a permitting process. So you know, depending on the scope of work, what we'd always recommend. Uh is you're going to either at some point need an engineer or architect anyways to get stamped plans. And then have the contractor prepare their scope of work off of the plans. Because what we see sometimes is a contractor will create their own scope of work. And it doesn't necessarily coincide with what the stamped plans are. And what the advantage is, is if you go through the process of engineer architect plans. You have something you can send, send out to bid to contractors. So you're comparing bids from multiple contractors. And you have apples to apples, not apples to oranges, because you're not having the contractor come up with their own scope. So you know exactly then what you're buying. And then depending upon the size of the project, you could also get, you know, you could hire an owner's rep. And what an owner's rep does, it can help you through that process or a project manager. And they're there to actually look out for the owner's interest, making sure like what Mike was saying, you know. If they're out there and there's, you know, a sub, because the general contractor for the most part doesn't perform any of their own work. They're, they mainly work through subcontractors. What that allows then is the project manager, let's say they visit once a week, they're there checking to make sure things are done, a little bit of QC, right? They're going through, making things are progressing as they are, but it all depends on the scale of it. If you're ripping drywall and putting it back out, you don't need an engineer and a project manager. But if you have just the shell of a building and you got to start all over, you're going to need to go through the formal process. So that way you know exactly what you're buying. It's getting put back the way it's supposed to be. You know, on the, on the construction defect part of our uh, of our practice, what we see a lot or what owners say is, well, the city came out and inspected. You know, they passed the inspections and they, you know, we got a certificate of occupancy. So everything, everything's built the way it should have been. No, that's, that's not, you cannot rely on the city inspectors to find things that are issues as far as with the putback. You're going to need someone else out there because they're looking more at just simply life safety. Are there the required nails in the shingles and sheathing? Are there the required screws for the most part in the windows, things like that? They're not there for the waterproofing. So there's a process that it should be followed, but it really just depends on the general scope.
As we're coming up on the uh, the hour here, um not to put you gentlemen on the spot, but I guess to conclude. Maybe let's uh just go individually, if you can give one piece of advice to a homeowner on the call that can make them look like a hero at their next. Uh board meeting or just something that could potentially predict the future as for better preparation for next year. Uh specific to your industry, you know, what point would you drive home to that board member to um again, make them look like the hero?
Um I could start if you want. I would say uh fully review your program, know your deductibles. And know what's covered. Um a lot of people, you remind them, you remind them and they kind of gloss over it. Pay attention to just the basics. You know, your agent basically handling, I mean, you're handling millions and millions of dollars for the association. I would say, you know, we don't expect you to be the experts, that's what we do. But understand at least the deductibles and what you have covered.
Yeah, I'll go next. I mean, look, call us a, a public adjuster, let us come in. Let us uh, let us help you and your boards. Uh don't take any liability and ownership on yourself. Uh let us. Do it, your policies. Um you know, let us look at your disaster playbook. You know, with my experience in the association management world, this is what we review disaster playbooks, review policies. Uh it's just like Mike says, make sure in case of X, Y, Z. And uh, and do it now. I mean, we got an imminent threat coming next week. So be prepared as much as possible.
Uh I'll be proactive. Inspect your buildings, don't defer maintenance. You know, that's again, what I mentioned earlier, one of the bigger things, wear and tear, maintenance, insurance companies love that as an excuse not to pay. So don't ignore things, be proactive, especially going into next season. If you start it. Once we get out of it, it's going to put you in a much better shape, you know, Mike, make Mike's job a lot easier.
Well, I like that. I mean, I, uh Kelly took my line proactive would have been a word. Uh I, I think the big thing, if I was going to be a hero homeowner or a hero board member and I'm coming back to my associations or my management company and say. How about this as we, as we look to the future? I would say it is preparedness and it's, it's also realizing that when you have storms like this, it's not just about insurance. And law, it's also about making sure you show that you're healthy to begin with. Have that, that stuff ready and, and in the wings, because you just don't know what you're going to need to do outside. Uh of, of the standardized, uh you know, hey, if we're filing a flooding claim, we're filing, we're filing a, a, a wind claim, whatever it may be. Is to have your ducks in a row, understand where your association is. You know, what are your past due percentages? What, how do you compare to your neighbors? The better, the better you can perform when it comes to. Showing that you're healthy outside these storms, the more outside support you're going to get. Uh so having the, and having the right team, I think to uh to not engage somebody like Steve is just a mistake. You have to have that in there. I think they have a good reserve study. Those reserve studies are great for cataloging your current conditions. Uh and I think probably help things out tremendously as well. I know the banks rely on them a ton now is. You know, if I fund project day to day and it might be flood damage or refunding this, what's your next five years look like, you know? So that would be my two cents.
Remember you only have one year to file a claim. So if you not filed your claim and that law keeps changing, it was. Five years, it was three years, now you only have one year. Get that claim filed.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. We appreciate your time. Um I do want to also hammer home that uh for those of you on the call who've said, you know, thanks, but we already have a public. Adjuster, we already have a firm or a bank or an insurance company we work with, that's great. When disasters happen like this. That firm might not be available to you. It's good to get on the radar of multiple service providers. And if any of you need contact information, I see Steve put his in the chat. Uh if anybody's looking to get in touch with Mark, Steve, Kelly or Mike, reach out to me directly and I'll make sure that they get your information and you all can. Um connect in the future. So thank you again to our panelists, Mike Andrews, Kelly Corcoran, Steve Mason, Mark Cove. Uh we appreciate your time and knowledge and look for this video to be. Uh something you can revisit on the West Florida Chapter YouTube channel as well as the CAI Florida YouTube channel here in the next few days. So other than that, everyone have a great rest of your Wednesday.
Thank you, everybody.